Okay, I'm not ready. Okay, we'll try it again. We'll call the order. In the absence of a minister present, we will do a moment of silence, please. All right, rise if you would and pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Crouch?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Koppel?
Here.
Mr. Loggson?
Here.
Mr. McCrillis?
Here.
At this time, we'll do, we have resignation or reappointments to the boards of commission. So one was a resignation?
Yes, one council was from the...
John Edwards?
No, Lee Caple.
The Tyusville zoning hearing board?
Yes.
That was one resignation, Lee Caple.
Yes.
A resignation, we have one new appointment, reappointment, John Edwards, that'd be for the Board of Code Appeals, and then Abigail Popescu, reappointment to the planning commission.
Okay, and are those mayoral appointments, or do we vote on this council?
I believe I thought those were council.
Okay, so would somebody, in interest of the time, would somebody like to make a motion to reappoint both names aforementioned?
I'll make a motion to reappoint both names as mentioned.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Loggson?
Yes.
Mr. Koppel?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. At this time, I'll turn it over to Neil, let you introduce our new Public Safety Commissioner.
Yes, Council, when the city decided that we were filling the vacant fire chief position with Public Safety Commissioner, we started with offering this vacancy within the ranks of the fire department. When no qualified candidate's applications were received, we then moved on to the police department. I received a resume from the current police chief, Dustin LaBoulan, for this position. Since Dustin was promoted to police chief back in 2018, the police department has made great strides in future advancement and professionalism within the department. Dustin, who started out as a patrolman, worked his way up through the ranks, ultimately to become the chief. In my time here as city manager, the past three years, Dustin has shown his dedication to the police department and to the people of the city, treating everyone with respect and great leadership. With the creation of this new position to oversee both the fire department and police department, there's no doubt in my mind that we have found the best and most qualified person for this job. Council gives me great pleasure to introduce to you Titusville's, City of Tyusville's first ever Public Safety Commissioner, Dustin LaBoulan. Dustin, if you would, come forward, please.
Oh, it's Council to stand up behind you, if you would, to your council, you can enjoy it. You can stand in front so we can catch you with the camera. All right, we'll do it like this.
Okay, if you'd raise your hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support...
I do solemnly swear that I will support...
Obey and defend?
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth?
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge?
And that I will discharge.
The duties of my office with fidelity.
The duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Okay, whenever Neil is done here, we're gonna take a 15-minute break, escape, and argue by example, for a 15-minute break. Then we'll see what's...
I think it was a joke.
We're gonna do a 15-minute break and...
I think you should have a pink afternoon and a meeting, certainly what stays to the end.
What, no ice cream?
You were supposed to bring that, wasn't you?
I seen it, except it was bringing ice cream. Works us every other week.
That way we bring people in, right?
We can have cake and ice cream, isn't it?
That was in the fine group.
Congratulations.
It would be within a two-year period of building this facility. They want to come, the next step is for them to come to Titusville, meet with the city, meet with the redevelopment authority, meet with housing, see if there's an area in the city. They like to be in the city somewhere so folks can walk to the restaurants, to the stores, and what have you. So basically, we want to see what the needs are for the city. If it makes sense, if it doesn't, then that's okay too. So that's something that we're going to be meeting in the next few weeks. Mayor, I don't know if you had any...
They're looking for approximately two to two and a half acres, something like that?
Two and two and a half acres is usually with parking and obviously the facility itself.
And I think one of the things that was really neat to hear is how much they work with the community, that there was some talk between our housing authority and them that they are not here to compete with our housing authority. It's a different, different group of people that they're trying to attract.
Is it independent living or is it assisted living?
Yes, it's independent living.
They're going to have, they will have so many, a certain percentage that are ADA compliant. But yes, it's independent. But they do have on staff, onsite staff.
Yep. I think they said in a forty unit, they have four to six handicap rooms that they also build. But again, one and a half to two acres is what they're looking for property-wise. So again, they're going to come to the city. We, it was an initial interview to basically introduce ourselves and it was done via Zoom, so the next time this will be coming to Titusville. So potentially exciting news. The next, I'd like to talk about the dumpster ordinance update. The dumpster ordinance review committee has had a chance to meet a few times in the past weeks to discuss the current dumpster ordinance and make recommendations for changes. Highlighting some of these changes, our dumpsters shall be allowed in the commercial two, residential limited business, industrial and residential three zoning districts. Dumpsters will be allowed in the commercial one and residential two zones upon issues of a permit by the zoning officer. Obviously, they would be subject to regulations, meaning is there a space, a space for the dumpster? Is it on Smith Pad? Is it going to be fenced in, you know, with enclosure, things like that? Other changes include residential properties with four or more units shall be permitted to utilize a dumpster, subject to restrictions as well. Obviously, they'll have to meet those guidelines. Again, this is convincing in the beginning stages, but an ordinance is being put in place and being written by your solicitor. It'll be presented to council, obviously more discussion we had. But those are the highlights of that dumpster ordinance change. Councilman Lawson's been a part of those meetings as well, providing his input. One of the, the other things we spoke about doesn't really go with dumpster, but in an effort to alleviate the issues concerning trash removal in downtown, we've had some discussion about the area around Franken Street and Diamond Street. We spoke about that and came up with three options for trash removal. So I actually have a letter here that we developed. Maybe wouldn't you know, I might have forgotten. Nope, I got it right. So we, in an effort to alleviate the issues, as I said, we've come up with three options for folks that live in the immediate downtown area. The first being for those who are content, and I'm just going to read this from the letter that we developed, and that's going to be delivered by Skip to these businesses in town. The first one is for those who are content with a ninety-six gallon totter and have room to store in their large can either inside or behind their business, you may choose to continue with the city's contracted hauler. Second option is for those commercial establishments who don't have room for the ninety-six gallon totter, you may choose to contract with a refuse collector other than the city's hauler. While you may be able to use a smaller can with another refuse contractor, trash is still required to be in a can with a lid. Number three, third option, the city has made arrangements with the Titusville redevelopment authority to refer downtown businesses to contact them. An agreement may be made for your business or a cooperative, a cooperative agreement of businesses to rent space for a dumpster to be placed on the redevelopment authority property to take your trash as often as necessary. Kristen, I've reached out to Kristen Kerr, executive director, who said she would gladly speak to those, you know, businesses that are interested in that, and she'll work with them to discuss the option and obviously make arrangements. So those are the three options that are, that we have for those businesses downtown. And again, Skip will be delivering that letter either this week or next week to those businesses and obviously answering any questions that anybody would have. Next, council, just briefly deputy manager status. The city has received over thirty applications for the deputy manager position that was newly created this week. It actually closed on Friday, the third of applications received. This week, we're going to be going through all these applications and finalizing the interview process also, finalizing questions that we'll have for that interview, and we plan us to begin again next week. Next, I'd like to talk a little about interior city hall renovations. Interior upgrades have begun inside city hall the past few weeks. Those upgrades include new drywall throughout the copy room, new flooring also inside the copy room. Our public works crew has begun renovations of the building inspector's office as this new room will be available to the public to review maps and other documents. We hope to soon be starting new flooring in other locations throughout the lower level of city hall. One advantage we have with the weather being somewhat cooperative, our public works crews have been able to do a lot of the work instead of us having to use an outside contractor, which obviously will save us some money. I did print some pictures off if you're council, if you're familiar, if some of the public's familiar with our copy room. It had the old paneling pieces on the wall, very old carpet. These are some updated pictures as the drywall's done and painted and trim's been painted. Next will be the flooring for the inside. It looks so much better. A much needed overhaul of the interior of city hall. Lastly, just want to refer everyone to the tap into titusvillepa.com website. Check out the community calendar as there has been a lot of things going on in Titusville. We're starting to get a lot of special events coming into the city to look at. A lot of phone calls from folks wanting to have events in Titusville and fill out special event applications. We're very excited about that, so I want to refer everybody to the tap into titusvillepa.com website to check out those events. And lastly, I'd like to also thank our city crews, all our departments for everything that they do from the police department, fire department, public works, water sewer, and city hall staff as well. They've done a fantastic job and we're excited for some of the new exciting projects we have this year. Thank you.
Any questions or would someone like to make a motion to accept the manager's call?
I have a quick question back to the end, Mayor. So because we got a grant for the dog park piece and that won't be CDPG now, is that going to be a separate project now or will Patrick still be doing that as well?
Yeah, so that'll be a separate project. The dog park will be, the funding, my understanding is that will be through the TCDA, through DRA. That'll start in the spring as well. That'll be a separate project from CDPG. And I was told by Kristen that there was a donor that actually donated another ten thousand dollars towards the dog park. So we're up to thirty-five thousand now, so.
And so they'll be hiring their own?
They'll be doing their own thing.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the manager's here.
Okay. Second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Coppel?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. Okay. This time briefly go over the recommendations from our planning commission regarding zone, right? Oh, no, sorry, minutes, awards, and authorities. I missed that one. Benson Memorial Library is the only one we have. Would someone like to make a motion to accept this as presentators?
I'll make a motion that we accept the library's minutes as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Coppel?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. Now, the recommendations from planning commission regarding zoning. So we, we actually had some recommendations from our planning commission and the Crawford County Planning Office as well, correct?
Yes.
So really, after reading through this, everybody in council received this, then we're going to ask you to get together with, or we're going to discuss it now. We're asking together with solicitor to see how this is going to have to either, I don't, it won't have to be a new ordinance, but it'll have to tweak our ordinance or else do a, be able to do an addition to it. But I guess that one of the things we could talk about is do we allow owners of structures to, let's see, to exceed the one-year allowance? Do we keep that up one year or do we up that past one year? What are council's wishes on that?
Mayor, if I could speak to that if you'd like. I'm your representative in the planning commission.
Yes, certainly. Come on, come on forward and introduce yourself, please.
I'm Rhonda Clark. I'm chair of the planning commission. So I just wanted to explain, you know, our reasoning. We looked at Crawford County's recommendation on the city's proposed ordinance and we were in agreeance with Crawford County that that particular ordinance was not an appropriate use of zoning to solve the problem that was at hand.
You mean the spot zone?
Yes.
Yes.
But we kind of went beyond Crawford County. They suggested, you know, that's not appropriate. We don't advise it. Maybe that there could be some amendments. We, we felt like that the one year was restrictive to potential business owners. If somebody acquires a property, particularly one that has a lot of updates needed, it may be over a year where they can get anything, machinery, anything they're being demoed on. And the way that the ordinance, the special use ordinance worked is if you don't put that building back into that previous special exception within that year, then you lose the grand, I know we're not supposed to use grandfather status, but
Yes.
we kind of all understand what that means. You lose the special exception. And so it's more than just putting in an application. You have to actually be putting that special use back in. So we felt like maybe a year was a little restrictive and so looking at the possible ways to approach this, instead of rezoning that corner, we felt like we could perhaps look at a broader zoning question, which is, is this enough time? In any case, not just one case, but in many cases. I know there was, for example, one of the owners we talked to, because we did a little canvassing and got a little bit of feedback from the neighbors. And there was a sense of, oh, well, I'm going to need that, you know, a few blocks down in a few months. Can't we just do this at the same time? So it was kind of a misperception about the zoning process. And I thought, well, if there are other cases, you know, maybe we just need to be a little more lenient on that one year. So what we're recommending is that you suddenly alter the existing certificates, the revision of the certificates of non-conforming structures part of the ordinance.
To what?
Well, I'll read it to you and then I'll explain it.
Yes, please.
The revision allow owners of structures or land with previous non-conforming use status and whose previous non-conforming use has lapsed by virtue of exceeding the one-year allowance for continuance of that non-conforming use to apply for reinstatement of the non-conforming use. And that's the most recent previous. You can't say, I'm going to be a stable now because this was a stable and that means one or one or two.
Okay.
It has to be the most previous. This would include a reviewed application process overview by the zoning board and open to public comment with advertisement. This application will allow only for reinstatement of the most recent non-conforming use and would be available through the end of the fourth year after cessation of the non-conforming use. So five years total.
Okay.
Regardless of how many ownership transactions have taken place since the cessation of non-conforming use. So that allows even more freedom. It allows maybe that. One person bought it and realized, I don't have the money for this. They immediately flip it to another buyer.
Correct.
Who does want it, but now they're two and a half years in. So what they do is, well, they can apply. It would be a publicly advertised process so that there were neighbors who objected. They could come and talk. It does differ from a zoning variance because there's no necessity to demonstrate hardship, which is, it's really a different question when you're trying to agree. So we're really talking about just adding more time to the process and allowing a little more feedback if that time is going to be on that one year. So that's.
Well, you very, very well explained it. Thank you. And, and as long as you're on that, then explain the last paragraph to us.
We have on our count, on our commission, a member who is directly employed by an interested, an interested, an interested party.
Okay, I got you.
And, and we were received from that person of a letter articulating that she would not be participating in any discussions or votes.
Okay.
Because she was recusing. So we just wanted to also say if there's any other persons besides that that had a relationship, that it's a recusal on a vote.
Okay. Thank you.
One more thing I did want to say, this has come up before. I know what Councilman McCrillis, I years ago, mentioned possibly revisiting our comprehensive plan, which currently is only involving two partners or is it, you know, it's originally, I think, what, four? Two pulled out. Now the comprehensive plan allows.
What do you, which partners? Who are you referring to?
Well, I think it originally, it had, originally had Cherry Tree in it.
Okay.
And possibly Pleasantville, parts of it. And now it's Oil Creek and us. And so the idea of a comprehensive plan, a couple of things. One way we use it is we, we spread zone. And so by law, you have to allow for every legal use. Let's say, the example that always comes to mind is mobile home parks. Well, Titusville didn't really want mobile home parks in the city limits. But by having an agreement with another zoning entity that did want to have mobile home parks, and that was Hightown area, then, then our agreed zoning then shows that we're allowing this zoning. It's within our comprehensive plan with another nearby entity. So it, it gives you some flexibility in your zoning. And it also is a way that you can look forward to the future and kind of re-envision. You know, talking about senior housing, how do we want Titusville to look? What do we want to keep? You know, like in the story, but what else do we want? How do we keep that? How do we become special? So revisiting the comprehensive plan is a great idea. But I would say, and, and you can revisit stuff like this. Maybe we do need to look at some of the hotspot corners in the future. Maybe the historic buildings do need more leadway when it comes to businesses within, you know, we have the overlay down Main Street, but maybe take a look during the comprehensive plan process and see if we can be creative. We are looking at short-term housing. We should have something to say on recommendations.
It would be nice to, it would be nice to have that in place before a lot of summer activities.
We have, we'll, we'll, we'll throw the ball back in New York court with recommendations and a list of serious considerations and concerns.
Perfect.
That the city can figure out. So, but the last thing is that the county is in the process of creating a model comprehensive plan. So I think we should probably hold off on that till the model comprehensive plan process is near completion or complete so that we can utilize their expertise and their hard work. We do have Titusville area residents and certainly residents in the total comprehensive plan that we currently have who are serving on that board, who are participating. So it's my understanding that the purpose of that is to, to assist in other municipalities either creating or updating their comprehensive plan. So in other words, I think we should do it, but not today. Maybe wait a year or two and see how that looks.
You mean the comprehensive, not, not the Airbnb in it?
No, the Airbnb will, I think some steps probably need to be taken pretty quickly if that's going to happen. And as, as long as we're on that topic, just so everybody understands, the Supreme Court in Pennsylvania has been busy on this topic. And Erie is one of the cases that worked its way through pretty quickly. Originally, they were told, well, they were, the courts kind of sided on behalf of the residents wanting to allow and saying that the zoning allowed it. And then it kind of went to the Supreme Court and flipped. And they basically said, they weren't necessarily commenting on whether or not Erie Sugar shouldn't have it, but they said if your zoning does not expressly articulate short-term rentals as a special use, then you do not legally have a short-term rental. Short-term rentals, anything under thirty days, it's trains and housing. So, so if we want to have it, it has to go into the zoning. And then the question is where and how and to what extent, if that is something the city wants.
I certainly think in a city our size, it's, it would certainly help people financially.
It, it can. I mean, and again, we'll throw, and kind of back in New York court, some of the concerns we've been looking at as far as insurance, liabilities, changing the kind of nature of, of the city. And that can be a very good thing, but we want to be careful.
Yes.
You definitely want to preserve, you know, the positives that are there and protect business owners as well. It's encourage them to have, have this opportunity. So, so yeah, it's, it's something that I think could be potentially very beneficial. I know right now in the rental market, this is my perception, seems really tight. And so, you know, putting in or transitioning some of our current rental stock into, into sort of special use and taking it out of the regular rental stock might be a concern that maybe hasn't come across the radar screen yet.
I don't think it normally affects that. I think what it does right now, at least when we hear about events coming to town, people are recommending everybody to go other places.
They go elsewhere, yeah.
And it would be nice to be able to, they would probably eat out more and do more business in town if they could be here, I think.
That's the hope, yeah, that there's.
Well, thank you for everything that you're doing and explaining this so well.
One last thing.
Yeah.
If the unnamed entity doesn't want to wait on an amendment, they always have the option of going and getting a zoning variance. And then if an amendment is approved later, if that doesn't work out for them, there's, this can be a backup plan. But they don't, in other words, have to wait on this. If they would prefer to try to demonstrate hardship and get a variance in this particular case.
Well, after hearing her explain this so well, if council, if we decide as council for you to send this to Tim and see where this needs to be, we can move forward on that pretty quickly, correct?
I did have an hour-long conversation with a fellow from Crawford County planning about this. Kind of ran the idea by him and got some suggestions, so it was what they're in, but it's well, not formal.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rhonda.
How, how does council feel about this, just the way they've ordered it, just letting you take that to Tim? Is that what required two readings? Were we changing orders?
I think with the reading, we were gonna refer.
For a zoning, you have to have public hearings and you have to have a.
But for this, this part about the non-conforming, that, that's not, that's not an ordinance, that's a zoning.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to have to go through your regular two public hearings and all that. And it doesn't have to go back through planning since we recommended it. I know, I think it will have to go back through Crawford County planning, but I suspect it would be a pretty fast read if it were.
So you want to, you want to, we'll just leave it to you to check on it, if everybody's okay with that.
The one thing we didn't make our recommendation on, we figured that there were people up the food chain that are equipped to answer the question is whether or not there would be an application for you. So I'm not sure if that would be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we have council committee updates. Anybody have any updates? All right, we'll move on to the public participation pertaining to agenda items. Five-minute time limit per speaker. Just tell us if you're a resident or non-resident. If you're a non-resident, how you're connected to the city. We just have old business tonight, award the RFP for the church-run mitigation plan, second reading of council bill number one, and second reading of council bill number two. Do we have anybody that'd like to speak on that before we go? Okay, go ahead, Neil.
Yeah, council, we had initially spoke about the RFP award at a previous meeting. I was tabled for this meeting. I was asked to provide counsel with the numbers, the scoring, and some other information in regards to the four different companies that applied for the RFP. I don't think council has any questions regarding the points. And I put the cost in there as well, for each of the engineers of the project. Discussion based on the evaluation criteria. The committee felt that Martin and Louie Ducci had the strongest overall proposal.
I do have questions on it. I know the committee, you know, recommended them, but we also had Stipper McGraw that's here in Titusville who came in like three thousand dollar or less and had a higher score. You know, I'm, I'm about, you know, I go out to city council, try to keep stuff in Titusville and, you know, save the city money wherever we can. And the, you know, this is just my second year on council and so I don't know what kind of dealings the city's had with Stipper McGraw for, but they might have different employees over there now. You know, Joe Roddy lives in Titusville and, you know, he's kind of their, their front runner over there. And I firmly believe he'd work hand in hand with you and the city to make sure this project goes smooth. And anything to keep in, in town, to me, it's, it's not worth giving to, you know, somebody that's not even, where are they from? New York?
Yeah.
And we're going to pay them and take the money back to New York instead of paying somebody local who is, then that's, you know, working with bridges and stuff is their specialty. You know, I, we, we need to give them a, a chance, even though, you know, for one, they have a higher score. And two, you know, they did come in on budget for us. And, you know, we should be able to make that decision besides Crawford County telling us what to do because they're not here in the city. So, you know, I'm, I'm a big believer on, on, you know, award that Stipper McGraw because they're local. They had a higher score. That's his specialty is bridges and stuff. And that's our, that's our biggest problem. That's why our fighting continues because everything gets caught up around the little bridges and heavy street. So, and I think they'll work with the city hand in hand. They're literally a block from city hall, so there'll be no excuse for us or them to communicate daily and it would be a.
Anybody else with thoughts?
I would agree with a lot of what Chad said. I know there were some concerns about some past projects coming from the county. I think we can mitigate those concerns, but just have a conversation upfront. And these are our expectations. And I think, you know, when we look at that point score, point total and the two to three thousand dollar difference, I think we'd be silly not using a local contractor just because he has a connection to this town more so than some guy in Rochester's going to. And we can't ignore the fact, the amount of work that he's done already in this project and the prep work helping the city out as well.
Yes, which I understand looking into it, he did quite a bit of prep work under this. I would be, I mean, I, I would have to stay with Chad. I think if we, at all possible, can keep a local, let's do so. Anybody else?
I think there's a downright shame if we don't go locally. Excuse me. They moved here, how many years ago? Brought their company here to Titusville. Let's, let's use Titusville as Titusville. I'd agree with Chad.
Sarah?
I don't want to make any bad to what everybody else said at this point.
So I guess.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
To accept the Stipper McGraw proposal?
I make a motion to accept a Stipper McGraw proposal.
Okay, then I'll second it.
Are we okay on that? Who went first and who went second?
It's fine.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Coppel?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Hurry, yes. Okay, next.
Counsel, this will be the second reading of council bill number one of 2023, an ordinance to the city of Titusville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances of Titusville, Pennsylvania. Again, this was for last year's 2022 ordinances that were passed. Again, this is not a requirement. It's just something we've always done, so.
Okay, do I hear a motion to have the second reading of council bill number one?
I make a motion to have the second reading of bill number one.
I'll second it.
All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Coppel?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. Second reading of council bill number two.
Yes, council, this is an ordinance to the city council of the city of Titusville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, fixing at twenty-nine thousand dollars the compensation for the Titusville tax collector for the term of office commencing January first, 2024.
And how much of a raise is that?
I believe it was three, three thousand. I think it was one from twenty-six to twenty-nine.
This will start 2024 when that, when that's to the newly elected person.
The treasurer.
Okay.
And that is shared between the city and the sort of district, correct?
The three thousand dollar change will split. So essentially, the city will be fifteen girls.
So we're approving the budget before we do our budget? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the second reading of bill number two.
I'll second it.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Coppel?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. No new business tonight, so we move to public input. Anybody from the public wishes to speak? You have a five-minute time limit. And if you're not a resident, tell us how you're connected to the city. Don't everybody jump at once. You guys are good? Okay, we'll move to comments by, we'll start with our junior council.
I don't have anything to say, but congrats to the chief.
Okay. And what's his new type?
I'll be honest, I can't remember.
I was going to let you look at your notes.
It's on your agenda.
All right, public safety commissioner.
Yes, thank you. Okay, Bill, we'll start with you tonight.
Okay, uh, well, first of all, I'd like to thank, uh, Neil for the job you've done getting this, uh, control thing under control. We, uh, I think you made a, you made a fine choice on your candidate and the chief. I just got one thing to say. If the people in Titusville have any qualms or questions about your water bills, which like I have, uh, you need to take it to city hall, get it found out, which I will do tomorrow. Some people get in charge a little extra, I do believe, for some reason, I don't know, we're gonna find out one way or the other, but, uh, I got confidence in the, in the city management that they'll find out, and, uh, maybe lower some level, but anyhow, uh, thank everybody in, in the city of Titusville, for everything that they do, the work that they do all around the city, uh, not only the city employees, but the, uh, the citizens of Titusville. And, uh, without them, well, we wouldn't have a city as far as I'm concerned, and the people. People are, play a big part, and, uh, thank you once, once again.
Chad?
Oh, I'm good, man, I spoke more in English than you did.
We liked it, go ahead, Sam.
So first I wanna notice that, why not, that it was history set tonight? And this was the first time that I recall that there was actually an argument of who was gonna make a motion, so...
It was very emotional.
It was very emotional, yes, so, um, other than that, I've got nothing else, other than, again, congratulate Dustin, his new position as public safety commissioner, um, I think this is a great set for Titusville, and as we look forward into our staffing of our community, this potentially can be a cost savings and may see a little bit more of that.
Deputy?
Uh, I, I wanna just echo a little bit of, of what Sam just said, it's, um, it's nice to see the city moving forward with the new positions that are being created and, um, and thirty applications is a lot, like, that's a lot more than I would have anticipated that we would get for a new position that people aren't, aren't real sure. Um, and so I, hopefully there's some real qualified people in those applications, and, and, you know, we get another good person, um, on the administrative staff, um, but I, I, I think moving forward, it's a, it's a good for the city and, and, um, also we, and so Bill talked about, you know, the citizens and, and how important they are. We have some openings on boards and authorities, uh, and so, you know, thanks to those that, um, put in for reappointment, uh, but also there's, there have been some vacancies, and of course, we had a resignation, uh, this evening, someone who, um, has decided that their time is done, so we need some new folks to step up to that as well. Uh, and so as, as we keep moving forward, hopefully we'll see some additional people who wanna be involved and, and we'll fill some of those vacancies.
I had one other thing, too.
Save it for next meeting, go ahead.
As we're talking about vacancies and upcoming vacancies and stuff, timelines, um, there isn't one actually coming up, there's gonna be four seats available on the city council. If anybody in town would like to have an opportunity to run for city council, I believe sometime next week or the week after, we have to go and start that process. So if you're looking for a chance to get on the ballot, this is your time.
Need a hundred signatures, that's the hardest part, getting on the ballot. Okay, I would like to start tonight as mayor, thanking Neil for the work of getting Dustin as our new public safety commissioner slash fire chief slash police chief. Uh, and I would just like to say how refreshing it is, three years ago, we're starting our fourth year, but three years ago, when we came on council and Neil came on board, we've had a lot of changes, and, and we started out a month into it with the pandemic, you know, hardly, hardly we got our feet wet, for, when that's happened, Bill came on board then, and I would just like to say that as things come up, one of the things that really is refreshing is how, uh, when adversity comes, we don't run away from it, and especially Neil, our city manager, thinking back to the raccoon refuge thing and how we solved that, and how we solved issues, you know, we, we found out late November that we were not gonna have a, a fire chief going forward, and we all had put our heads together, but especially Neil, trying to figure out how we could solve this, and as Sarah already stated, being futuristic in our thinking, especially with a town our size, thinking of, we wanted to move more into the ambulance realm, how we needed something that was more administrative-heavy, and trying to find the right person, and I'm very thankful we found the right person. And I'm also thankful that on the council of this size, we appreciate very much what our local redevelopment authority does for us, we appreciate very much what the county does for us, and all the input they give us, and all the input the planning commission gives us. But at the end of the day, we have to take all that, talk about it, put our heads together, and with our three votes or more, decide what we're gonna do. And tonight we saw that worked out, that it's not just a rubber stamp, this is our recommendation, this is what we're gonna do. We decided that we're gonna step out, take a chance, in spite of the county might having some misgivings, we'll talk about that, Neil will, and we're gonna move forward with using a local engineer firm, Stifler McGraw, and I'm very excited about this for our future, and thank you to our public works for doing extra stuff. It's, we're working at city hall while they're waiting for snow, which is okay with me if it doesn't come. If we can get through this whole winter without having to do the emergency thing, I'm fine with it. And, uh, with that, thank you, council, for coming early tonight, we had an executive session before our meeting tonight, on some personnel issues, got everything worked out, nobody threw any punches.
We'll talk to the meeting.
What's that? That's true. And, uh, with that, I'll let somebody make a motion to adjourn if you'd like.
I'll make a motion to, to adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Longston?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Koval?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.